All right, it's 6:00. I'll call the meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, May 25, 2021. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings in several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for a listing and application. If you could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Would someone like to read the community prayer? Thank you, Bob.
Almighty God, homily we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Belbin. A couple of quick announcements before we start. First of all, the four Public Safety Department Heads have met, and they've decided that the EMS Chief and the Emergency Management Director will be the two Public Safety Representatives on the TA Screening Committee. The FinCom has met, and they've appointed Alan Jermaine as their representative to the Screening Committee. And the School Committee has met, and they've selected Jen Pratt as their representative for the Screening Committee.
Mr. Chair, may I ask you a question about that, or is that for another meeting?
I'm sorry?
Just the two Chiefs that were selected. The EMS Director is appointed by the TA, that position. I just didn't know if people knew that. I don't know whether that's appropriate.
Well, that's who say selected. You know, we can discuss that if we want on our agenda at the next meeting. It's really not on the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Very good.
So, before we start, a brief discussion on the procedures for the Town Administrative Screening Committee. Just a couple of things I think we need to keep in mind as a board. So, we did agree at the last meeting to try to keep these interviews to five minutes. I know that's quick, but we do have an agenda and a schedule. COVID precautions are still in place, which means the amount of people in the room are limited. So, I think it's important that we all try to be as concise and keep to that schedule as much as possible. I'll open the interviews and ask a general question to folks, and then I'll turn it over to the board, and we'll go around the room. If you have questions, or perhaps you don't have questions. I think, to be fair, we should try to keep the same questions to all the applicants so they all get the same opportunity. So, with that being said, is there any thoughts or discussion on that? Ms. Bogart?
A question that I had thought of was there was a number of applicants that referenced their interaction or their working with Mr. LaFond in the past. So, I just wondered about asking, knowing that he will probably be a candidate for the position, how would that affect their analyzing other candidates since they have experience working with one anticipated candidate?
Sure, and that's probably a good question to...
But it won't be to everybody.
Okay, well, okay. I understand. Yeah, that was sort of a unique...
Okay.
I understand that. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Mr. Belbin.
There was an email that was sent out about a concern. I'm just trying to look for it, I'm sorry. That Jen had brought up about the Finance Committee, I think. Can we just relate the findings for that?
Well, so I spoke to Mr. LaFond this morning, and he told me he's spoken to Town Council, and the Finance Committee is fine to be on this committee. They can serve, they can vote. Town Council has said there's no issues with that. So, if you have any further questions, reach out to Mr. LaFond. But that's...I had a conversation with him this morning about that, and that's what he informed me. And just a couple of other things. Applicants Nancy Reagan and Margaret Wood are unable to attend tonight due to scheduling conflicts. Applicant Scott Neef withdrew his application as the School Committee member was appointed, and we saw that earlier. That was Jen Pratt. Jen Pratt. And applicant Donna Foren has also withdrawn her application. So, with that being said, it's 6:06, and our first interview is with Ellen Blanchard.
She's on her way.
Okay. Is anyone else here, Elaine, that we know of?
Pat Mahar is here.
Perhaps we could take Pat Mahar out of order. Does anyone have an objection to that? No? No? Mr. Mahar? Would you mind going a little early, Mr. Mahar, since...
I will do anything that you'd like.
Wonderful. Thank you. I wonder if you could just tell us why you want to be on the Screening Committee and what particular strengths you feel you'd bring to the committee?
Sure, Ken. Thank you. And thank you for having me, and it's always a pleasure to be in front of the Select Board. Been a while, but...
Speak into the mic.
Oh.
Thank you.
How's that?
Good, that's good.
Okay, good. Just to go over a couple of things. Overall, I've got about 30 years' experience in municipal finance and administration. Many of those years with the town of Carver, when I was in the School Department. I first came to Carver in 1993. There was no Town Administrator. Many of you remember that. Remember welcoming the first one to Carver. I was also there in 2014 when the second Town Administrator was hired. Currently, I'm on the Finance Committee, the Redevelopment Authority, and the Cable TV I think that this is a critical position that we're looking at right now. The best decision has to be made. And I think that, say, that there's 25 applicants, and 10 become interview candidates, meaning you've got 10 that meet the minimum criteria and effectively could do the job. So, it will be something else that will differentiate someone in that group from moving forward or moving backward, such as personality, management style, advanced degree, unique certifications, and so forth. And those will all be weeded out in the interview process. But I think most important is to get the right fit for the job. Critical, the right fit. And that's not necessarily the most highly qualified individual either. It's the one that's going to be the correct fit for the Carver environment and for bringing the town of Carver forward. Over the years, I've done a lot of hiring at all levels, and I've been on many committees like this. We do Assistant Principals, Principals. I've been on Superintendent Committees and so forth. So, we've done some high-level hiring. And I've always gone by that type of approach. Who is going to be the best fit? And it's always worked well for me over the years. So, what I'd like to do is bring that experience and knowledge to the process.
Thank you. Why don't we go around the room? Ms. Ewens?
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Pat, my first question, I don't know if we get a chance to do two, but my first question is, could you explain to us, or do you understand, how the various town departments work together and what they require from a Town Administrator?
Oh, I pretty much do. I was, you know, in the school administration for many years, and I understand how the departments work together, how they have to work together. How the Town Administrator is the go-to person, you know, for this. Provide the leadership of, particularly, say, in budget season and so forth. Provide that leadership to the various town departments in getting them to work together.
And the description, the first part of that was describing how the various departments do work together?
Well, the various departments do work together by providing their own unique services to the town. The School Department provides the education. The DPW provides the maintenance and facilities. You've got public safety. You have police, fire, EMTs. You've got technology and so forth. They all have to intermingle. They all have to work together. Used to do that with Department Head Meetings. And that was very effective in getting everybody on the same page, but that was also headed up by the Town Administrator, who would make sure that everybody's in line and that we're all going towards the same goal.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman?
I'm all set for now.
Ms. Bogart?
In your submission, you had said you remember welcoming the first Town Administrator to Carver. Was that Mr. LaFond?
That was Mr. LaFond.
So, then how would your prior experience with him impact your decision-making and your process through this all, knowing that he will probably be one of the final candidates?
Well, I think that certainly I've known him for many years, worked with him for many years. But I also have the ability to look at this very objectively. The only thing that matters here is getting the right person in to bring the town of Carver forward. And that's what I'm looking for, is the goal is to make the best decision for the town of Carver, period. And I would say that I would not, my decision, any decisions that I would make or any suggestions that I would make would not be weighted by that previous relationship.
May I ask a second question?
Well, let's get to Mr. Belbin. I just want to make sure we try to stay as close as we can to schedule here. Mr. Belbin?
Thank you for showing up. I appreciate it in applying. How would you go about rating an applicant on qualities, i.e. personality, their finance ability, their education, human services, public rapport, honesty and integrity? How would you go about doing that?
Well, first of all, you would do that face-to-face. And you would get a feel for a person, just like we're doing now. We can get a feel for personalities. We can get a feel for, you know, do I like this person or not? But to get in deep, into, further into that, there would have to be some type of contact with, if these candidates, where they're currently working, or previous employers, previous towns. Where have they worked? What have they done? Contact with people in those towns. Talk to those that have worked directly with this person. Visitations. I assume that when you're coming down to, like in my example, you've got 25 applicants, you get 10 interviews, and you're going to end up with three finalists. I would assume that there's going to be some group or subcommittee that's actually going to go to the previous, or the current employers, or maybe even previous employers of these finalists. And that, and I've done that before with Principals. I've done that before with Superintendents. You learn a lot by going into these types of meetings, getting the right types of people, even, you know, sometimes conversations in the hallway with this. And that's how you, that's how I would judge, further judge. I mean, personally, you do it face-to-face. Secondly, you do it with people they worked with. And then, thirdly, I would even probably want to talk to people who know people that they worked with. Okay? So, I would make that a three-tier search.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mahar. Ms. Weston, I can't, are there other applicants in the hall?
Yeah, there are.
Okay. I think we need to move along to our second applicant. Thank you very much, Mr. Mahar.
Well, good. Thank you for having me.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, our next applicant is Ellen Blanchard?
Do you want Ellen? She's here now.
Yes. Yep. Thank you. Ms. Blanchard, come on in.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Could you just let the board know why you want to be on the committee and what individual strengths you think you'd bring to the Screening Committee?
Certainly. May I remove my mask?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'm fully vaccinated, so. I have been a resident of the town for almost 30 years. I have a, all of my adult life has been spent working for municipalities, and I've worked for many, less than 10, but. As a municipal employee and a resident of the town, I feel that I have enough experience and knowledge. And as a leader of many other groups, both inside and outside of government, I feel that my contributions would be helpful in selecting a new Town Administrator. Especially because of not having been a Town Administrator, I know what it's like to work for Town Administrators, and I have a unique perspective in that. I have, I am fairly well-educated, and I have been a leader in the assessing field in Massachusetts, represented Massachusetts at International Association Conferences. So, I do believe that the leadership skills that I have gained through many different types of organizations would be beneficial. But my focus would be on finding or setting the goal of having our new person in the Town Administrator position to be respectful of everyone, to not just have previous knowledge, but be willing to learn more about what it takes to be a great Town Administrator, working for the taxpayers and the townspeople of Carver. The, I think that it shouldn't be so much a top-down kind of thing, but I think it's important to, for the Town Administrator, to be open to information from the different departments and to even to the point of seeking out information.
I don't want to cut you off, but I do want to let us go around the board.
Sure.
The room with the board, and I know we have to try to keep to our schedule here. Because of COVID regulations, we can't have people inside. So, Ms. Ewens?
Thank you. Thank you, Ellen. My question is, do you have an understanding of how the various town departments work together and what they require or need from a Town Administrator?
Actually, yes, I do. Having worked in many municipalities, as I said, it's been interesting to me to see how different Town Administrators interact with different departments. And the ones that they are the most comfortable with tend to be better served and better serving to the taxpayers and townspeople. I think it's very important for a Town Administrator to listen and be aware of all of the departments and what they have to offer.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman?
I'm all set.
Ms. Bogart?
First of all, thank you for a very thorough letter.
It said in detail, so I did.
I appreciate that very much. On page two, you had said that in 2001, the town of Carver, led by then-Town Administrator Richard LaFond, restructured the Assessing Department, creating the Director of Assessing, which you were hired for.
Yes.
How would your previous experience working with Mr. LaFond affect your process through this, knowing that he may want to continue in the position or pursue the full-time position?
I've always been, he's a very friendly person. He does ask questions. He does listen, which I think is important. And we don't always see eye to eye, but I do like him as a person. I think he served the town well for a long period of time, and should certainly be considered to re-engage himself fully with the town of Carver.
Thank you. Mr. Belbin?
Same question I asked. How would you go about rating an applicant on their qualities, i.e. their personality, their finances, ability, human reservices, public rapport, honesty, integrity? How would you go about doing that?
I think the last two are the most important of all of those, honesty and integrity. However, you know, financially, he has to, he or she has to be the person that will take the lead in making sure that we have a balanced budget and that the monies that are spent are spent with a great deal of forethought. We do have to, you know, he does have to help submit a financial statement to the Finance Committee and to the Selectment, and hopefully, he or she will listen and understand where, what the greatest needs are and where they are, and how to enable getting those needs met. So, understanding the entire process from, you know, where the tax bills provide more than 50% of the town's budget, starting there, and then the collections, to fit each of each department, to make sure that they have adequate resources in order to do the jobs that they need to do to make sure that the town runs properly. Additionally, besides the financial, human resources, the person in, as Town Administrator, should have a good track record of hiring people who have the ability, the knowledge, and the experience to do the jobs that are needed to be done in Carver. And I think, you know, it goes without saying that their education needs to be top-notch and their experience as well. The other item that is important is that they are receptive to not just the taxpayers and the townspeople, but to the employees of the town. And working well with all departments, including the school, because I know I'm speaking from the municipal side, but I think all of those items are extremely important.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Blanchard, we really appreciate you coming in this evening.
Thank you.
And stepping up to try to serve the town, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next interview this evening is Mr. James Allen. Mr. Nowon, how are you this evening?
Well...
Wonderful. Could you just tell us a little bit about why you want to be on the committee and what individual strengths you think you would bring to the Screening Committee?
Well, I...
Jim, could you speak into the mic?
Yes.
If people can hear you.
Right. Necessarily, I'll drop the mask, but I think that we have a good reason why we should pay a lot of attention to selecting the next Administrator. And that good reason is our history of the last, what, six, seven years. I found that to be very challenging. I think that Carver was damaged quite severely by some of the practices that were involved there, cutting of staff and so on and so forth. So, I feel that we have to try and see a little farther forward than the next paycheck, the next pocketbook. And we have to make sure that policies that are set up are policies that are going to produce solid futures for the town.
Wonderful. Thank you. I'd like to go around the board and hear from the other members of the Select Board. Ms. Ewens?
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Jim, do you, I'm asking the same question of everyone, so. Do you understand or can explain to us in some fashion how the various town departments work together and what they require or need from a Town Administrator?
I believe I do. I mean, I've been here for, since '80 in the town, '82 actually, and been active in town activity since about 1990. And I've seen a number of things with Highway Department, as going from a sort of volunteer representative from the Conservation Commission to the Earth Removals Board, got an idea of how earth removal has to work with the town DPW and help to fund it. And then, from that, you get to see an example of how the town has to figure out its processing for funding the road maintenance and snow removal, so on and so forth. Other departments, some familiarity with them, not as much. But I've been in on the edge of government for most of my life. My father was a civil servant, and I was very aware of the people that he worked with and so on. So, I think I have a good understanding of what's involved.
If I could, the second part of the question was in what the departments need from a Town Administrator? Excuse me.
He has to be able to take their requests, their needs, as they see him, and perhaps show them, if we can't handle it at this time, how we can perhaps try and handle it in the future or shape our responses. In other words, maybe a partial move toward a policy that they feel is important, but which we can't afford completely at this time, just like maybe the school needing more teachers or something like that, but we don't have the funding for that. But finding a way to somehow bring the effect of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoffman?
I think we have a pretty good system. I'll pass again.
Okay. Ms. Bogart?
How deep into an applicant's work history and past do you think the Screening Committee should go?
I would say fairly deeply. And again, because of the fact that we've had a rough experience. I'm speaking bluntly, but I think that our former administrator who's left us has a history of lawsuits and various other things, and I just, I think that should have been a little bit more of an indication that he was maybe not the best suited for the job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Belbin?
So, this Screening Committee, my feeling is, is that has to have truth, honesty, and integrity. And I don't think you have those qualities, and I'm not even going to... And I don't think you have those qualities, and I'm not even going to answer... Ask you a question.
All right. Mr. Nowon, we appreciate you coming in.
If I may point a word. I think that's completely out of order. We're not here to attack members who are applying to our screening committee.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, to be honest, I could turn around and name three or four different instances about this applicant, but I chose not to.
I think we should...
Yeah.
Mr. Belvin, I think... Mr. Nowon, we appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
We appreciate you volunteering your time.
Yeah. Thanks for your time and your consideration.
Our next interview is with Gail Nowon. Mrs. Nowon, welcome.
Good evening.
Could you tell us a little bit about why you want to be on the committee and what individual strengths you think you would bring to the committee?
Well, individually, yes. I am an individual in that I have a... I'm an artist, full-time artist. I have a different way of looking at things. And being an artist is a lot of problem solving. So, that's one trait that's unique. I have been on a handful of committees in the past four to five years, and I've enjoyed that. And I'm hoping that my involvement has been a positive thing for these groups. And what was the question? Because now I have to rethink it.
Just what strengths you think you would bring to the screening?
Oh, okay. Those two. Mostly my approach to problems. And I've been told that, you know, from people here in town, that I have a different way of looking at things, and I think that helps when you want to have a broad spectrum of a group.
Thank you. Ms. Ewens?
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Gail, I've been asking the same question of everybody, just so you know.
Okay.
Do you understand or can you explain a bit about how the various department works? And then, the second part of the question is, and what do the departments need from a town administrator?
Actually, I did write some things... What if I give it that note? I wrote some things this afternoon. Here's my notes. At the top of my list is somebody who is brilliant. I would like somebody that's absolutely brilliant. I would like a good listener, a problem solver, appreciate the town's history and those involved, willing to listen to all points of view before forming a decision or a plan of action, live a reasonable distance from Carver if at all possible, be aware of the town's unique history, and assimilate that into its future. Now, whether or not I know a lot about the departments, how they all interact with each other, maybe not as much as some people here in town. I have lived here since 1982, but I do have an understanding because I have been involved with politics a little bit and also the groups CPC and the Carver Arts Council and...
So, your answer was really an answer to what the departments need from a town administrator? Those qualities?
Yeah. That's the answer. I don't know if that was the question that you asked, though.
No, no. It was fine. Thank you.
Mr. Hoffman?
I'm all set. Thanks.
Ms. Bogart?
How deep into an applicant's work history and past do you think the screening committee should go?
The way you're asking that question is hmm.
It's not meant to be a loaded question.
I don't mind if you look into my history. I have... Actually, I've updated my resume if you'd like to look at it. I guess just go as far as you need. I mean, that's another thing. I think in the past, when there was this kind of projectory to do a job and not listen to other people and not dig deep, that was a problem. I think people should listen. I think the town administrator should, you know, work with everybody and be a very good listener and be willing to really dive in and investigate issues that come up. And if one of them is figuring out this applicant, whether they are going to be a good candidate, then sure, there shouldn't be any problem. I don't think anybody should have an issue with the privacy. You know, that gets a little strange in our society these days. I don't think there should be a problem. So, however deep they want to go.
Thank you.
That's just my opinion.
Mr. Belvin?
Okay. How would you go about rating an applicant on their qualities, i.e. personality, finance, human services, public rapport, honesty, integrity? How would you rate those for an applicant?
How would I go about trying to evaluate them? Is that what you mean?
Yeah. Just, I mean, how would you go about that process for it?
Well, I'd spend some time doing research about them, you know, really diving deep.
Can you rate them as what's like the best out of those that I just gave you? Which is the most important?
Okay. Let me read them.
Want me to read them again?
Hold on a minute.
I'll be quick.
Whoops. Go ahead.
Personality, finance, human services?
Yep.
Public rapport, honesty, integrity?
That sounds like a nice blend. I don't know if anything really screams at me of those, because some of them are kind of the same. Yeah. Some of them are more the social aspects of them, and some are more the business aspects that you're giving me.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Nowon, we really appreciate you coming in this evening.
Oh, you're welcome.
And our next interview this evening is with Deborah Giswaldo.
That was pretty good. At home, it was.
Ms. Giswaldo, how are you this evening?
I'm fine. Good evening, everyone.
Could you tell us a little bit about why you want to be on the screening committee? What strengths you think you would bring to the committee?
Surely. My biggest strength that I'm bringing to this process, if I'm able to, is my objectivity. I've had a lot of experience with interviewing for different positions in the town and being on search committees, and you have to put your personal opinions aside 100%. I'm a retired teacher from here in town, and I know how to speak to people, teach people, work with people, children, parents, without any concern for political background, for their personality quirks, where they live in town. You have to be totally objective and have a clear mind and able to follow the norms of a group. In other words, keep your mouth shut when you're supposed to and follow what you're told to do and what you've agreed to do in the process. I really want to do this because I believe that Carver deserves the best candidates and the best employees they can get. Quite often, on some committees, when I've started out, "Well, this is Carver, and you know, it's a small town." No. We should set the bar high and look for the best people. Walk away from the past and look toward the future. And how we handle this process now and how you, as a board, ultimately handle the recommendations is the reputation we have out in the community. I recently spoke to someone and said, "You know, there's a job opening in Carver and blah, blah, blah. Would you be interested in looking into that?" "No. I hear they don't treat people well there." Well, there's a little bit of truth to that, and there's a little bit of falsehood to that. We want people in the future, not just for this job search, in the future to see an opening in Carver, to look it up and say, "You know what? I think I'm going to apply for that job." So, we're sowing seeds now for this position and into the future, and that's how I see it.
Thank you. Ms. Ewens?
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Deb, I'm asking everyone the same question.
Surely.
Do you understand or can you explain a little bit about how the various town departments work and, in particular, what they require or need of a town administrator?
So, a town administrator is commissioned by the board, the select board, and town meeting, to accomplish the goals and protocols and procedures or whatnot that are put out there, bylaws, follow it all. So, no matter what department or what function... I come from the school side of things, so I'm more familiar with that. I do know that every employee in the town of Carver deserves to be respected and treated with dignity at all times. And that doesn't mean you exclude bargaining units when they're in contract negotiations. It doesn't mean you exclude people who mow the lawns. And it's just everybody. Everybody deserves dignity both ways, the candidates who apply here and the employees and ultimately, the town administrator.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman?
I'm all set.
Ms. Bogart?
In your letter, you said you served on three insurance advisory committees and three public employee committees under two different town administrators.
Correct.
Was one of them Mr. LaFond?
Yes.
How would your past experience with him affect your ability to be on this committee, knowing that he will probably be pursuing the full-time position?
Well, I really don't have an opinion one way or the other on this one because I have drawn a line. There's the past and present. We're in the present now, and the past has happened, and we're looking toward the future. So, if I'm permitted to serve on this committee, I will not look backward. This town does too much looking backward, too many grudge-holding things. We need to start looking forward and looking to better our community as a whole. So, as far as I'm concerned, the minute you say, you know, "Mrs. Giswaldo, will you serve on this committee?", I'm going to forget the past.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Mr. Belvin?
Did you already hear my question out there?
I heard something that wouldn't seem very kind, but yes, I heard one thing.
I kind of got that through your answer, and I understand totally. All right. My question is, how would you go about rating an applicant on their qualities, i.e. the personality, their finance, human services, public rapport, honesty, and integrity?
Well, first of all, in my personal life, my integrity and my honesty and my character is the number-one thing. So, I value those things above all else. As far as rating the qualities, we're going to be handed packages of resumes and information, and we're going to interview people. And so, to outline how those would fall on the spectrum to me, I can't do that at this point in time. I do know that honesty and integrity are the most important thing to me. And from then on, as, you know, the information is given to us, then I will know better.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
You're quite welcome.
Giswaldo, I want to thank you very much for coming in this evening.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next interview is with Mary Ross. Ms. Weston, do we know if... Oh, there she is.
Yep. I couldn't hear.
Yeah, it's all right.
Right.
Mrs. Ross, how are you this evening?
I'm fine, thank you, and every all of you.
Thank you. Could you tell us a little bit about why you want to be on the screening committee and what strengths you think you would bring to it?
Okay.
And Mrs. Ross, could you pull the mic real close?
Yep.
You don't think I'm loud enough? Can I take this off while I'm speaking?
Yeah.
Thank you. It occurred to me that my experiences living in town for 46 years, long before we had a town administrator, and being involved with the youth in town, both in my career of teaching for 30 years in Carver and running the, what was then called the Carver Youth Needs Committee, which then evolved into the Recreation Committee. And so, I think I can bring a lot of varied experiences to the group. I look at it from probably a different perspective. I'm probably the most apolitical person. Those of you who know me would agree with that. But I'm more of a people person, and so I think that's where I would be able to help with a decision.
Thank you. Ms. Ewens?
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Mary, I ask the same question of everybody. Could you... Do you understand or can you tell us a little bit about how the various town department works and, in particular, what the departments need from a town administrator?
It doesn't have to be lengthy, just your...
Your understanding.
My experience in dealing with different departments in town has been from a financial perspective of depositing, you know, money from recreation deposits, what actually mostly what we did for the ski program for all those years. And so, I haven't had a lot of experience with some of the other departments in town. But I do think that the importance of the town administrator is to maintain an atmosphere and a climate inside Town Hall that everyone feels valued, everyone feels appreciated, if they so deserve it. And there are easy ways to resolve conflicts within a business, within a space like this. And I think they are the overall director, being the town administrator, and to have enough people sense, I guess might be the term, to be able to help other departments work together without any resentment or conflicts. And I'm not saying there are any because I don't know that, but that's what I see as their role. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman?
I'm all set.
Ms. Bogart?
How deep into an applicant's work history and past do you think the screening committee should go?
I'm not sure how deep into their past you can go. Can you legally ask for more than just a pass/fail reference from one town to another? Do you know what I mean? Isn't that the case with most jobs now? So, you can see where they worked. I think you just got to get a read from them when you meet them. I look at most adults as tall five-year-olds, and that's taken me pretty far.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Belvin?
Thank you for coming. How would you go about rating an applicant on their qualities, i.e. personality, their finance, their human services, public rapport, honesty, integrity? How would you go about rating those?
Within the interview process, you mean?
Yeah. The whole process of you're going to be interviewing people, and some of these are going to come up that you... Really, how are you going to gauge that person and say their different personalities, how they work and their finance, how are they human services? How would you rate those?
I would hope that I could be coming from the perspective of reading people as opposed to having great knowledge of the inner workings of the financial departments in town. I think that it's difficult to know on the first meeting how people really are. They don't always show their true face. If that sounds unkind, I don't mean that, but... So, it is harder. I think you have to kind of gear your questions so that you can maybe get a better sense... I think you have to kind of gear your questions so that you can maybe get a better sense of how they would handle a circumstance or a situation in their role. I think that conversations tell a lot about how they handle themselves. And then with their knowledge of other things, I think would probably go based on references. I would assume that the committee would look into references and any other referrals that might come with the person. I would honestly, I would think it's a very difficult thing to know for sure. Who is, you know, truly honest and whatever. They all say they are.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Mrs. Ross, we really appreciate you coming in this evening.
Oh, thanks.
And we'll be in touch.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your night.
Our next interview this evening is with Paul Kelly.
Do we... You're still locked and that's good. Wired up.
Mr. Kelly, how are you this evening?
I am doing darn adequate. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Could you tell us a little bit about why you want to be on the screening committee and what strengths you think you would bring to the committee?
First of all, do you want this on or off? Does it...
Up to you.
Okay. Just for clarity's sake. No, just involvement overall. A lot of you know me from the background in the sense that I'll help out anybody that I can with volunteer and otherwise. And I've been involved with the town for, I've been here 30-plus years, been on multiple mass master plan committee and bylaw committees and all kinds of other stuff. Town administrator, when I first got to town, the town administrator position was not there. And I think it's a good balance. I think it's a good, it's not only hopefully an advocate for good and all of that, but also it can kind of enact some of the thoughts and the feelings that you guys want as a board. I don't know what, you know, I mean, this... Yeah. I mean, I don't know if that answers it or if you want anything else.
No, that's fine. Thank you. I just want to go around the room. Ms. Ewens.
Thank you.
Okay.
Paul, I'm asking the same question of everyone.
Oh, feel free.
So, can you tell us how, what your understanding is of the way the various departments work together? And the second part is how, what do they, the departments, need from a town administrator?
I guess a lot of it is a positive agent of change. You know, somebody to be able to, you know, the board hopefully is, I think it is, a representative of the people, of the citizens, and somebody to be able to work in consort with, you know, that particular position, to make those happen. I don't know if that directly answers it or not. I'm not... I want to make sure I'm answering it completely, but I'm not avoiding it, just...
No, well, from your experience within whatever departments you've had experience with...
Yeah, the department, I mean, I've had the fortune to do a lot of volunteering and helping, anything from Boy Scouts, which I was in for about 20 years or so, and then the library and then now the Council on Aging. So, I can see where certain pockets of the town need some extra attention, things along that line. And somebody that is, that has an open, you know, open ears to be able to do those is a great thing. So, I, and then what I've seen in the last couple of years anyway, and this is just as an outsider, is it seems to be more involvement with the directors and the TAs as well as yourself, more than there might have been, at least from what I saw earlier. And I like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman.
I'm all set.
Ms. Bogart.
How deep into an applicant's work history and past do you think the screening committee should go?
You've said that a few times, I think, right? What I really look for is tendencies throughout. If somebody has the right heart and motivation, then the other things kind of work themselves out. Where it kind of goes off-kilter is when it's not. So, I, yes, if they have particular titles or things along that line, that's important, but it's more that somebody can be, it's just my meager opinion, in business as well as other things, there can be somebody behind that person that's actually doing all the work and somebody just has the title. For me, I like to get into what they're actually doing, things along that line. Thank you.
Mr. Belton.
Hi, Paul.
Hello, Bob.
How would you go about rating an applicant on their qualities of personality, their finance, human services, public rapport, honesty and integrity?
Those are pretty broad, overall. I mean, integrity really comes down to, I mean, it's hard to uncover, but it's one of those things that when you see it, you know it. And you know through scouts and otherwise that, you know, the honesty and trustworthy and all of that is the way that you should be, one way or another. And I would assume the same through this particular position. The reason I think that most government is here and particularly this one is for social services and to help people out, to be the net and also hopefully be able to kick-start those that, you know, can do more good in the future, things along that line. It's kind of like a family type of thing sometimes, yeah. Some people need more help, but sometimes. You don't need that, I'm sure, Bob, with your guys, but...
Thank you very much.
Did that answer?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Mr. Kelly, thank you. We really appreciate you coming in this evening.
Thank you very much.
For your service to the town.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Our next interview this evening is with Jennifer Galant. All right. Ms. Galant, how are you this evening?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Thank you. Good. Could you tell us a little bit about why you want to be on the screening committee and what strengths you think you would bring to the committee?
Sure. My husband and I moved to town about five years ago. We are both involved in public service in town and I actually work full-time for another municipality nearby. So, having the opportunity to be on this committee will give me a chance to be more involved in the future of the town and what direction we're headed in and kind of guide us in just getting more involved and having a better outlook on the future and how to get there.
Okay. We go around the room. Ms. Ewens.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. So, Jennifer, I asked the same question of all the applicants. Do you understand or can you explain to us in some way how the various town departments work? And the second part of the question is, what do those departments need from a town administrator?
Okay. So, I can, at least for the public service side of it. So, we have, our Public Safety has three, four, if you count Emergency Management, significantly well-run departments in town that I think need to have an open-minded town administrator because we do tend to run a little differently than our surrounding towns. And I think they need the support of the town administrator to continue with the resources that they run and continue to grow as the town grows. The town, I'm sorry, the school system as well, our population of our younger generations just continue to grow. I think the growth in this town and the amount of people that are moving into town is going to tax the school system, so they're also going to need some significant support from a town administrator that hopefully can look at some creative avenues of revenue for different types of funding so that we can continue to support those systems.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman.
I'm all set.
Ms. Bogart.
All right. I've been asking the same two questions, but something struck me in your letter as unique, that you have a master's degree in public administration. How would that help or affect what you brought to a screening committee?
So, I think the most important thing for me is to have a town administrator that is transparent and easily, easy to communicate with. I do have a small amount of experience in public administration that I want to continue to grow, so I would love to have a town administrator that's willing to work with the community and be very open about why we're headed in the direction, why we're doing the things we're doing, how other people can get involved. So, my master's degree in public administration really opened my eyes to how different types of town government run and gives me a lot of options that there are different avenues of things that can be accomplished and ways that can be accomplished. Thank you.
Mr. Belton.
How would you go about, oh, thank you very much for showing up. Appreciate this, taking the time. How would you go about rating an applicant on their qualities, i.e. the personality, finance, human services, public rapport, honesty, integrity?
So, those are a lot of questions in one. So, honesty and integrity, I think, is something that as a committee, we're going to have to go with kind of our collective experiences and thoughts and, you know, some history on the applicants themselves. And, you know, that's not something, there are people that can be very good at, you know, it's not something you can learn in an hour-long interview, is whether somebody's honest or has good integrity. So, their public rapport, I think, is very important, just like I answered, Ms. Bogart. They, I feel like a town administrator should really be able to openly communicate with the public, especially specific residents that have certain questions, and be very transparent about why we're doing the things that we're doing and how that's going to help us accomplish what we need to accomplish. So, I think their public rapport is very important and I think that that can be done in a, you know, pretty short period of time as far as how they answer questions and are able to hold conversations and things like that. What other parts of your question did I miss?
No, that covers it.
Okay.
We're good. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you. Ms. Galant, thank you very much for coming in this evening. We really appreciate you stepping up and offering your services to the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next interview this evening is James Dayhill.
Hi, folks. How are you?
Good, Mr. Dayhill. How are you this evening?
All right. And so, you guys all know me.
Could you tell us a little bit about why you want to be on the screening committee and what strengths you think you would bring?
When you first did this, all right, a week ago, Friday, you only had three people to do the thing. Then come the rest of the week, you had nine. At the deadline, there was only three. So, I figured I'd jump in and help you out if you needed a quorum. How did we get from three to nine?
Ms. Weston, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we had, was it 15 or 16 applicants by the deadline?
There were 16 applicants by the deadline.
Thank you.
You had 16. Okay. How did I get picked out if you had 16? I thought I was only one of three or four to come in and help you, but I'm here, I'm fine. Keep going.
But that was my question. What strengths do you think you would bring to the screening committee?
Well, the screening committee is that you'd have to interview somebody. My problem was your previous administrator, it didn't seem like anybody due diligence to check on him. I was at the Town of O'Hastert one time at a baseball game, a football game, a basketball game, excuse me, and I was talking to one of the select ladies there. And she was so frightened to be on the select board, she had to carry a gun. And when I found out who it was and where it was working, I wonder who brought him in to do due diligence, to do his background check, because it seemed like it went right by the whole select board. So, now we get another one on there. Now you get the new one in here. And I don't know, what's the matter with the new town administrator you have here? I know he's only in here part-time, but are you guys going to put him in full-time? Or are you going to look into it? Does he want to do it? And, you know, you've got to interview people, check on the companies that he's worked for, what they're going to bring to the town. Are they going to work with the select board? Are they going to work as a team? Can the public approach them? Are they going to be here? Are they going to make good decisions with the select board? And how they're going to treat their employees who are coming in? Some of the people, I looked on your list, sound like the prisoners were bringing in the warden. And you want to, you don't want that when you're hiring somebody. You guys want to get together and learn what this person is going to do and how they're going to bring forth the town and where it's going.
All right. Thank you. Please go around the room. Ms. Ewens.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. And Jimmy, I asked the same question of all the applicants, just so you know. I'm just wondering how, what your understanding is of how the various departments work. And the second part of the question is, and what kinds of things do the departments need from a town administrator?
Well, first, the select board should be in charge of the town administrator. And the town administrator goes in charge of your lower teams, like your maintenance people, the school committee and all that. And you need, you need somebody who's going to work with everybody. You need a coach to run the football team. And if you don't have the right person doing that job, have the right qualifications, do you want a strong-armed person that we formerly had? Or do you want somebody who's going to say, yes, 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 yes? Or do you want somebody who tries to work together and is willing to say no? And, you know, yes, we can afford that, maybe we can't, maybe we cannot do. So, this is why you need to have a group to pick the right person to interview. You need to take the time out to go find out what this person's doing, what the people that he worked with underneath, do due diligence before you say, yeah, he's good and good. Our goal here, I think, is when you put the group together, is that we're submitting something to you five and you five are picking them, not us. All we're doing is making a suggestion. So, if the group picks one and thinks, does that mean what the group picks or does that mean what you folks want to pick? My, being on a committee like this, we've got to find the best person that's going to help the town grow, be able to talk to them, you know, and not have people be the fear of God that something's going to happen, that they're going to lose their job, whether it's the fire department or the police department. And one of my biggest questions was to that lady who had to carry a gun, was where was the police department? And her answer to me was that they weren't going to do anything because he hasn't caused any problems yet. And I said, so why do you have to carry a gun? You know, because that's how frightened she was. I don't want to see that happening again.
Okay, Sarah?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hoffman.
I'm all set.
Ms. Bogart.
I think you may have touched upon it. How deep into an applicant's work history and background do you think the screening committee should go?
It depends on how far you want to... The screening committee should go in and ask questions of the previous employees, the people who worked for him, what his goals are, what the town, what's his goal for the town, what is the town, for the town administrator, for the people you're going to work for. These people who are in here now need to have some input to find out what they're looking for. Because if you don't have the right person, again, we're going to start all over again and do it again and again and again. You know, you're going to get the same type of people applying. So, with the group you're going to have, you're going to need to pick the best one out of the bunch. And it's going to, it's going to take some time to do that. I don't know how long you need to get this thing done. Is it November or next year or something like that to get this thing done? But you need to take the time and do due diligence to find these people. You folks are going to pick them and we're going to sit there and give you the thing. My goal was to write a report to get to all five of you on what I thought was the best candidate to do these things. And, you know, I don't think it's money that we're dealing with here. I think it's, you know, you guys are pretty much up on most of the town administrators that I've talked to on the pay scale. that I've talked to on the pay scale. So, you want somebody who wants to come, not somebody who's going to stay for two or three years. You want somebody who's going to be here for four or five years, if not longer, that's going to work with the community, work with the select board, work with the general public and make it, make it so it's more convenient for the town to go ahead on what we're going to do.
Thank you.
Mr. Belbin?
Thank you very much. How would you go about rating an applicant on their qualities, i.e. their personality, finance, human services, public rapport, honesty, integrity?
Well, I'd be, I would take my time and, and find a person, do a check on him, do a background check on him, talk to his previous employee, talk to his, the town that he's working or been working, see what his education is, check his education background, see if it, if it's, yes, I have this degree, but nobody knows where it comes from. Check the people who, who's worked for them before. If worse comes to worse, do a credit check. If he, if he couldn't pass a credit check, how could he possibly run a town if he couldn't run his own finances? So, you'd, you got to, you got to do some due diligence to find out who's here and who's not here.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right. Mr. Dayhill, thank you for coming in this evening. We really appreciate it.
Good luck.
Appreciate you offering your services to the town.
You've got a hard job ahead of you. Thank you.
Thank you. The committee has a hard job. Our next interview this evening is with Adam Holmes. Mr. Holmes, how are you this evening?
I'm doing well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Can you tell us a little bit about why you want to be on the screening committee and what strengths you think you would bring to the committee?
Absolutely. First and foremost, thank you very much, all of you, for the opportunity to come in and, and talk, share some thoughts and ideas. But, you know, me personally, my, my approach with hopefully all things and all decisions is to approach it with an open mind. I don't have my mind made up when I walk into a meeting or walk into some sort of, you know, difficult topic or difficult discussion, discussion. And I think I'd approach this with the same type of open mind. I, you know, most of you know, I grew up here. I've lived here most of my life. I left for a short time after college, but my wife and I both are from Carver, graduated from Carver High School and, and decided to raise our family here because we wanted to be a part of the community, wanted to give back to the community in large part, excuse me. My mother was a single mother in this town, raised three boys all on her own, and in part, this community helped raise me. And so, it was really important for me to come back and give back to this community. It's a big part of the reason why I got involved in youth sports and wanted to be a part of it, is because so many people in this community, like, like Mary Ross, who was in earlier, you know, helped raise me, honestly. And, and it's important to me that this town is the best it can be. And I, I just want to be a part of something positive and, and positive change within this, within this town. I think there's a lot of, you know, interesting evolution that's occurring as we speak, and, and I'd like to be, as much as I can, a part of positive change in the town. So, I, I think my, my, my experience here in town, working with youth sports, working on the finance committee, I've been participated in, for years, in Recreation Committee meetings and Recreation Committee endeavors. I've served with a small group of parents that helped to build support in the community to get the elementary school project approved after several failed attempts. It, it took an army to get that done, but, but I participated in that and tried to help get that done as well. And I, I enjoy being a part of the community and, and helping any way I can. So, it's, I know that's sort of a general answer to your question, but anything and everything that I can do or anything that I can lend to positive change, I want to help do that.
Thank you. Ms. Ewens?
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. So, Adam, I ask the same question of all the applicants, just so you know.
Okay.
Do you understand or can you explain to us a little bit about how the various departments work together? And the second part of the question is, what do the departments need or require from a town administrator?
So, to be quite candid, I, I don't have a, what I would describe as a comprehensive understanding of how all the different departments work. I mean, I have a general idea of, you know, planning department and, you know, finance and accounting and that sort of stuff. I, I think my, my perception is, for the most part, that they all somewhat operate independently and that the town administrator oversees all departments, all department heads, and, you know, manages the day-to-day activities within Town Hall and within those departments. And I think, to the extent that those departments have to collaborate on different, in different areas, my guess is the town administrator acts as a liaison between those departments to help make that harmonious and, and, you know, make sure that everybody's collaborating nicely. I, I think the primary role of the town administrator in that aspect of town government, I think, is, is to make sure that, that everybody is approaching things with the right, the right attitude, the right perspective, and, and doing what's in the best interest of the town. I mean, that's essentially what I, I hope it doesn't sound sanctimonious, but my expectation is that everybody within Town Hall is acting, trying to act and work within the best interest of the town. And I know, depending upon what department you're in, sometimes there are conflicting interests. But the goal is to do what's in the best interest of the citizens and the town. So, hopefully, the town administrator can help facilitate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoffman?
I'm all set.
Ms. Bogart?
In your letter of interest, you wrote that you've worked very closely with the interim town administrator. How would your past experience with Mr. LaFond affect your participation on the committee, knowing that he may be a finalist for the position?
I appreciate your question. I think it's a, I think it's a really good one, actually. I, you know, I've worked closely with Mr. LaFond primarily as a member of the Finance Committee. And, you know, I've, I've enjoyed working with him, and I, I think what I, what I was alluding to in my letter is that, having worked with the interim town administrator and the previous town administrator, I have some perspective or experience with different types of people in the role, right? I, I think we would all probably agree that, that Michael's approach and Rick's approach is entirely different. So, I, and I think that experience and that perspective is important in helping to sort of mold, if you will, your perfect town administrator for the future of Carver. I think, you know, from every town administrator that I've ever had experience with, this town or others, you know, you, you sort of would love to cherry pick the best of everyone to build your perfect town administrator. That's, it's not realistic. But that's essentially what I was alluding to in my letter, is that I think that, having worked with both Rick and Michael, you know, I have some experience with different types of people, different personalities and, and different work habits, things of that nature, different characteristics that might help to, to shape, you know, the, the appropriate town administrator.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in and applying here. Same question. How would you go about rating an applicant on their qualities, i.e. their personality, finance, human services, public rapport, honesty, integrity?
Are you, just to clarify, Bob, thank you for your question, but are you looking for like, sort of ranking them in order of importance?
No, just, just like picking some of those out of what you would want to see.
Okay. Can you repeat them for me?
Sure.
Thank you.
Their personality, their finance, human services, public rapport, honesty, integrity?
So, they're, they're all qualities I, I quite frankly, expect in a town administrator, to be perfectly honest. I think you need all those qualities in order to be a good town administrator, and I don't expect anything less for Carver. So, again, I know that there's, there's been, you know, friction, if you will, in the community in the past with, with previous town administrators, and I, and I would like to think that going forward, we can, we can find someone where that doesn't exist, right? And at the same time, continue to move in the positive direction as far as our financial policies, our financial management policies that I think have improved significantly in the last 10 years. And it's put this town in a very good position, one that allowed us to essentially survive this pandemic with little to no damage to our financial management policies and financial management of the town. I, I think that, that's a critical aspect of what the town administrator does, is we, we need an individual that's going to adhere to those policies, follow our policies, policies that you implement, right? And make sure that the town is in the best possible position to deal with adversity, to deal with unforeseen circumstances. It's got to be somebody who's, who's very proactive in what they do. They can't sit back and wait for folks to say, hey, we need you to do one, two, and three and get that done. You need somebody that's proactive and that's doing things behind the scenes and getting things done. But I, I think all of those things, Bob, that you alluded to are extremely important. And I think probably for, first and foremost, this town is starving for fair, balanced transparency and communication and respect for all people. I, I think that that is, it is and has been a very hot-button issue for a long, long time. And I, and I think beyond just treating people nicely, you have to, you have to communicate with them effectively, to the point where they feel there's trust between the town government and the people in this town. And so, I, I think all of them are important.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Yeah, thanks, Bob.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes, we really appreciate you coming in this evening and your continued service to the town. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. Have a great night.
You, thank you. You as well. Our last interview this evening is with Kevin Tracy. Mr. Tracy, how are you this evening?
I'm good. Thank you.
Could you tell us a little bit about why you want to be on the screening committee and what, what strengths you think you would bring to the committee?
Well, the, the, the thing that kind of brought me to this particular position was that I, I think that the, what we're looking for is really kind of a new chief executive officer for this, for this town. I, I understand that the select board is ultimately in charge, but the day-to-day operations need to be handled by an individual who has the, the strength and leadership position of a chief executive officer. And I, you know, I, I kind of look forward to maybe, you know, being involved with selecting an individual who can help shape the future for this town for the next decade or more.
Thank you. Ms. Ewens?
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. So, Kevin, I'm asking the same question of all the applicants, just so you know. Could you tell us what your understanding is of how all the, the various departments work together? And the second part of that question is, what those departments need specifically from a town administrator?
Okay. So, again, as, as an elected official myself, North Carver Water District, I, I have to work with various departments, finance, planning, you know, all of those various departments. So, I, I have some understanding of what they go through on a daily basis. And, and, you know, I, I kind of would like to see maybe more resources provided to various departments. I can, I can tell you that there have been years in the past that, that some of the departments in, in this building have been kind of understaffed and, and in, in need of resources. The administrator is going to have to try to work with what monies are available to, to make resources available to, you know, all of the departments that have the requirements. There's a lot of, there's a lot of, of mandates that, that come down from the state level that, you know, many of the, the people in this building are chasing information for the Commonwealth. And that's, you know, they have to kind of make sure that the i's are dotted and t's are crossed and all of that stuff. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of time that gets spent on that. And, and the, the administrator needs to kind of help find the resources to make that possible and available to the individuals.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman?
I'm all set.
Ms. Bogart?
How deep into an applicant's work history and past do you think the screening committee should go?
I would, I would think a minimum of five years and, and maybe even 10. We need to, we need to know what this person's history is going to be before we can, the future performance is predicted by past performance. And, and, and an individual needs to have demonstrated that they have the qualifications that we're going to be looking for, you know, 10, 12 years into the future perhaps. I mean, there's, there's no telling how long somebody is, might work in this particular position, but, but you, you need to really kind of understand somebody's history before you can understand what they're going to do in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Belbin?
All right. Thank you very much for coming in. Appreciate it.
No problem.
How would you go about rating an applicant on their qualities, i.e. their personality, finance, human services, public rapport, honesty, integrity?
Well, obviously, honesty and integrity is, is like right up near the, the top of the list. You know, you need, you need somebody that you can trust to, to follow through with what they, what they say. It's, it's, it's one of those things. They need to have, they also need to have some common sense approach to the numbers. You know, there's, there's only so many dollars that are going to be available, and, and it all needs to be allocated properly. So, integrity, public service, it, it needs to be something that's in their bones. You know, we all know this because we're all public servants. You know, so those are, you know, you need to, you need to understand, again, looking at, at an individual's history will tell you about what it is that they're going to be in the future.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you. Mr. Tracy, we really appreciate you coming in this evening and your continued service to the town.
And I, and I thank you for your, for the, for your time on this, on this issue.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We no longer need to interview Alan Germain because he was selected as the Finance Committee representative this evening. So, we have reached the end of our interviews for the evening. And...
You did pretty good.
Well, thank you. Do the best we can. At that point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So, second?
We have a motion to adjourn and a second. Discussion?
Yeah. So, how, I'd like to know how are we going to go about the rest of this? And just so the public knows, how are we going to go about the rest of this?
Well, that discussion is not on our agenda, but I believe from previous discussions we've had at previous meetings, at our June 1st meeting, by the end of that meeting, we should have most of the screening committee selected.
Okay, because like, the first one says discussion on procedure of interview for autonomous screening committee, begin interviewing applicants for the at-large membership and the screening committee. So, I mean, the procedure of how this goes on, I think this, like I said, I just want them to know that this is our process, what we're going to go forward and...
I think, I think the process will be at our next meeting, which is next Tuesday, because this was a special meeting that we will discuss and, and vote on the at-large members for the screening committee. And we've already got, I think, the Finance Committee and school has selected their, have made their appointments. To the best of my knowledge, the Planning Board has not...
I think they're meeting tonight.
Okay. So, by then, we should have that. And we should be able to vote on this at the next meeting.
I appreciate it.
All right. All right. Any other discussion? All right. We have a motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.